Please rise and join Alderman Parker in prayer and pledge, please.
Thank you, Father, for this day. We thank you for the things that you've done for us, and we hope that we do what's right tonight up here as citizens of Long Beach for the best of their knowledge, our knowledge, that we accept you each and every day, that we love you, and we ask you to bless the first responders, our military people, and their families, for we asked all these things in Jesus's name and for His sake. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and just as for all.
All right, roll call. Patrick?
Here.
Pete?
Here.
Mikey?
Here.
Timmy?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
And Mr. Parker?
Present.
All right, we have a full call tonight. We have no public hearings, announcement, proclamations, and presentations. We have the art contest winners. So is Ms. Emily Nash or Ms. Olivia Brown here this evening? Okay, with that being, these are, these two young ladies are art contest winners. Their artwork will be displayed here at City Hall for the next month, and I want to congratulate both of them on behalf of the board and the city, and just keep up the great work. So, thank you. All right, so do we have any amendments to the municipal docket?
I would like to add one thing.
Okay.
I would like to add discussion of strategic planning, just to put something on the calendar for future.
All right, so under item nine, strategic planning, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I have two other items, if I could take them both in one motion. I need to add, I guess nominate or appoint a prosecutor pro tem for court this week, and if we could put that under new business ten, and then under engineering, item B, tidlin's lease application.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Approve minutes, Mayor Board of Alderman, October the third, 2023, regular, and October tenth, 2023, work session.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Let's see here, Planning and Development Commission, October the twelfth, regular.
But there's also executive session minutes too there.
Oh, so October twelfth, the regular and executive session.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approve docket of claims, one zero one seven two three.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. We're going to move on down to unfinished business, short-term rental, four oh five South Cleveland Avenue by Andrew and Laura Brayton. I do have the corrected insurance here. I can pass around.
We have it. We have it. Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under, let's see, short-term rental, two oh five South Cleveland Avenue, this was tabled in error by myself. The property manager, according to our, after reviewing our ordinance, it is in, it is in order, so if I could get an approval on that.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, short-term rental moratorium, Alderman Bennett.
So, we did enact the short-term moratorium until January first on short-term rentals. After our work session, I realized that we had multiple residents who were already, you know, under contract or in the process of registering their short-term rentals, and we kind of caught them off guard, some of them having pretty large investments in the properties. So, because of that, I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the moratorium for the next month. I guess we could do thirty days from here to allow those people the opportunity to go ahead and file. I guess that would open it up for anyone who has, is not current, who is running one currently and not following the ordinance, to go ahead and get in legally also. So, that would be my motion, just to open it back up for thirty days and allow those people, and then, you know, maybe after the thirty days, we might already have an ordinance on the books, some changes or whatever, but until then, thirty days.
Okay, so Patrick, just, that's your motion.
Second.
I have a second. So, in that motion, that would open it up for thirty days, and according to my math, we're looking at November the seventeenth.
Can we look at, so what would be the deadline that they would have to have it to planning?
That's, that's a good question.
Just, we might need to adjust it for that.
It's usually a two-week process, but I think we're at the end of the year where we're only going to have three meetings scheduled for the rest of this year.
Yeah, there's only one in November because of Thanksgiving.
What, so that's on the fifteenth?
The ninth is the only meeting in November for the planning commission.
Oh, I'm sorry, the ninth.
Yeah. The next one will be December fourteenth.
Well, let's go to the.
Just go to January one?
Let's, yeah, let's go to January.
All right, I, my motion, open up to January one.
Okay, and that's for all applicants then, correct?
Did you get a second?
Yes, sir, I did. All right. Any, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So that, the moratorium on short-term rental has been lifted while we work on the updating of the ordinance until January one of 2023. Twenty-four, sorry. Moving on. All right.
I apologize, I'm having a medical emergency right now. I'm sorry for getting up to that.
Yep, you're good. Just notate that, please. All right, next up, Mr. Troy Fisher, short-term rental issue.
Good evening.
Fisher, if you'll just, for the record, just say your name and give us your address, please, sir.
My name is Troy Fisher. My address is two ten Alvarado Drive.
Okay.
As we know, I'm here to discuss the short-term rentals. After the moratorium was originally put into place, I contacted my alderman, Mr. Gooey. She asked me to contact Mr. Frazier, because I had a few questions about what was going on with the short-term rentals and other questions of the entire process of short-term rentals. After a few emails and a phone call, it took about six days to get a phone call back, with the understanding I was going to have a phone call within four days to have some of my questions answered, and here we are. That was the twenty-sixth of September, and here we are on the twelfth, still no answers. So, I went to the work session meeting this past Tuesday. Some of the things I heard during that work session, I just couldn't believe. As aldermen of the city, you guys are supposed to be representing the citizens of the city, but the only thing I kept hearing was, how can we get our money? How can the city get money for these short-term rentals? How can we shut down these people that aren't doing it right? Like I told you that, what, last Tuesday? I had no idea, as a citizen, up until two months ago, that I even needed to have a permit. You guys are more concerned about getting money out of people than helping your constituents make it correct. That I don't understand. There was everything from, maybe we can shut off their water, to how can we fine them? Instead of reaching out and working with the constituents, if you know who's doing it illegally, talk to them, find out if they even know it, but there's absolutely no communication, and I think that's, that's wrong. One of the questions that I had, that I had sent you, that I still haven't received an answer on, is even if you have to have a permit to run a short-term rental, why are all the fees? Two hundred and fifty dollars for an inspection? It's my understanding the inspector already gets paid by the city, so why are we charging more for him to do his job? Five hundred dollars to continue to run a short-term rental? Makes absolutely no sense. I would hope that the, that the board understands the short-term rentals are for people that don't have a lot of money, that want to travel, that want to go see and try new things. The more they come to this city, the more money they're going to spend here. Therefore, you're going to get more tax money. If people are staying in Gulfport, they're staying in Biloxi, they're staying in Bay St. Louis, they're not driving to Long Beach to spend their money. They're not coming here for our entertainment, they're not coming here for our beaches, they're not coming here for our harbor. So, you're not going to get any of that money if you, if you put it in place and make it difficult for people to have a short-term rental. Talking about all the fees and possible fines, I don't understand why the city feels like the homeowner owes the city money. We pay our taxes, our taxes continue to go up, the fees for our services go up, but the quality of our services keep dwindling, and it's not because people aren't paying it, it's something with the contracting. I don't know what it is, but as residents, we never get answers for that. Like I said, you always want more money, but as a multiple homeowner in this town, the city's never paid my mortgage, they've never paid my taxes, never paid my insurance, my maintenance costs, but yet you want me to pay more money nonstop. I also hear on a regular basis from this council that this is how past Christian does it, this is how Biloxi does it, this is how Gulfport does it. We don't live there, we live here. We should be doing what our citizens want, not what other towns are doing. Our town is nothing like those. I completely understand there needs to be oversight on the short-term rental market and accountability for how they operate, completely understand that, but it shouldn't be done by putting another tax burden on the citizens. It was suggested at the work meeting that a committee be formed to try to figure out how to run the short-term market, and if that happens, I would like to be on that, on that committee. That's all I have, thank you.
So, we, obviously, we have to regulate it. We did hire a position strictly to regulate and manage the short-term rentals. I think, looking at last year, I think we collected forty-seven thousand, around forty-seven thousand dollars in fees, which is probably pretty close to what to pay, and when we talked about our fees, they were to cover the job that we had to create to regulate it, and I don't think that all of the taxpayers should be responsible to pay that. When you're, you're opening it, when you do, and I'm not, look, I don't think we should raise the taxes on it just because people say they're making money at all, but the fees are basically were designed to kind of pay for the position to regulate them. That was the intent of the fees.
Okay, but if you have, if you're bringing, say, what was the number thrown around Tuesday, two hundred and, two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty short-term rentals in this town? So, if you're bringing an extra four to eight hundred people a week or a day into this town and spending money, you're going to recoup that money that you pay for that inspector.
Well, I appreciate you bringing these, these concerns, but a short-term rental is also a business. And short-term rental, if you just base it on a hundred dollars a night and so many nights, a minimum thirty-six thousand five hundred is what that short-term rental can make, but I also know one that's making sixty-two thousand, depending on what they rent. It is a business, and so what we have done is created our fees based on usual and customary, which any other cities have done. The fees aren't to penalize, but the fees are set. That one hundred percent does get to go back. When you talk about taxes, that is totally different. It trickles down into a much different minute amount that we do get, but when we look at it, it is a business, and it should be run like a business, and for those, those people that aren't paying the taxes or aren't recording it or anything else, shame on them, but it is a business, it is a money-making business, and I don't, I really personally don't feel like those fees are out of line.
So, not all short-term rentals rent three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Some people do it for two weeks, some people do it for a month. So, those people are still having to pay the same fees.
Right. Well, it's, I'll tell you, it's none of my business how much somebody makes. I could care if they make five dollars or a million dollars, that's good for. dollars, that's good for them. Our fees for the short-term rentals are intended to pay for the position of the guy who regulates the short-term rentals, and out of those two hundred and thirty that they were talking about, I think only a hundred and thirty of them are legally on the books.
Right, so there was a position made.
Correct.
To hire an individual.
Right.
To regulate a hundred and thirty houses.
And to go out and find the ones that are not properly permitted and bring them through the process.
And that's not the sole, sole thing he does, there are other, other tasks that he has, so it's not like we brought him in to do one single thing, none of our employees do.
That's what was just said, was he was brought in to do that.
Yeah.
But he's got additional duties also.
Correct.
I mean, it's not, he was hired because we have this new short-term rental thing going on in our town, but none of our employees do one job.
Been going on since two thousand and six.
Pardon?
The short-term rental's been going on through, since two thousand and six in Long Beach.
And that's what we're correcting here?
We are, we are trying to go forward in a manner that is appropriate with what is going on.
So, just so everybody knows, I do not have a short-term rental, I wanted one until the moratorium was put in place, so I just rented it out full-time, but I still feel strongly enough about this that if there is a board, I want to be on that board, and I would like to see the discussions and, and, uh, participate in the, in whatever comes out of it.
Right, and we have, like, the, the hotel tax that they should be paying is a two percent tax that goes to the Coliseum Tourism.
Actually, it doesn't, and see, that's what we discussed.
Right, it does, so, be, these big companies, Airbnb and VRBO have made deals with the state to play a fat, uh, flat fee in lieu of that, but, you know, we're not, we're not collecting taxes, it's just, the fees for you to register are to cover the position to regulate it.
But in the ordinance that's in there right now, you want to collect taxes, you want to collect taxes on every single, uh, transaction that's done, that's the way the ordinance is written right now.
But that's the same with McDonald's, that's the same with, uh, Harborview, every transaction is taxed. How is that, when you're running a business, how is that different? Is my question to you then.
If, if somebody rents it out for two weeks, that's not a business.
It's a business, you're, you're taking, you're giving a service or a good for money. Am I, am I, and that's the way I look at it.
So, all those taxes and fees are already being paid to Airbnb, they're the ones paying the state, so why are there any other ones involved in it?
Because it's, there's a cost on the citizens of the city.
The city has to go out and police all this, and we have to recoup funds to have people on payroll to do that. If not, the whole city of Long Beach will be weekend rentals, and the city will go broke trying to keep up with them all.
I, I.
I mean, you, you have to find a way to bring people in to regulate it.
Let's move on.
Okay, Mr. Fisher, I'm gonna, uh, I'm going to recognize the fact that you've offered to, uh, serve on this, uh, short-term committee board and, uh, notate your questions for the record. We appreciate your time, sir. Okay, moving on, uh, short-term rental committee, Ms. Johnson.
Continuing the conversation, um, I, I think we need to, there are several committees we need to create, but short-term rentals, um, i- is a start, and so we're looking at people in each of our wards, um, that can serve on, so if y'all could think of anybody, um, I have two, um, right now, Michelle Dashar, and then, um, if y'all have anybody, I would like to co-create this committee if I could have them get a motion from somebody.
Second.
Just discussion, I, I would, I would say that we put that as a line item for the alderman to come in with a representative.
Correct, yeah, well, not, yeah, I'd have to have one of us.
Okay, because, well, you were, you were naming names tonight, so I just wanted to make sure we, we have, uh, we give everybody ample time to come up with that.
Right, but at the next.
As far as, what, what do you want to see as representation from the city on this board?
If I have, um, anybody that would like to sit on there, I mean, that, that is fine, I'm looking at each of us either putting one or, or two, I think two would be manageable any more than that would not, um, to put on it, if I have anybody that would like to sit on it, um, I would like to, does anybody else want to?
I will.
Okay.
I think.
I think Ryan, I think Ryan needs to be on it from the building department.
Well, yeah, well, the building committee, but Patrick has, Patrick.
And Bernie.
And Bernie have the brunt of the, um, homes, and, you know, and, and I think what also people need to understand is, we're tr- trying to protect those communities, if you have a cul-de-sac, you have ten houses, now you have six of them a VRBO, is that fair? Is it fair to the cul-de-sac that wanted to be non-VRBO? So, I think this committee i- is, is something that is needed, that can go out and help us.
Agreed, and I think the.
With the ordinance also.
An important fact is, basically, you know, that's extra people who can find out people who are doing it illegally to bring it into compliance, because that, that's the hard part, there's probably thirty different websites that you can, you know, put them on to advertise them, so.
Okay, Angie, so I have a, I'm sorry.
For clarity, I agree, Patrick, Bernie, yourself, uh, have the majority of them south, are you, did I hear you correctly that you wanted two representatives from each alderman?
It can be.
I think that, I don't know, I don't.
One, one is, is good.
Yeah, I believe with fourteen or fifteen people in there, you're going to accomplish
All right.
Little, I think we need to limit it to one, in my opinion.
Okay, I'm agreeable with that.
Okay, so, uh, if I'm, I'm going to repeat that we have, uh, we're looking to start a short-term rental committee, um, and we will, uh, hold this over to the next board meeting.
Right.
And come back with appointments, all right?
That's the motion.
Sounds good.
That's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, moving on, new business, uh, Mississippi Sound Coalition Activities, uh, Mr. Gerald Blessie. Good evening, Mr. Blessie, how are you, sir?
I'm fine, thank you so much for allowing me to be here, Steve, thank you, um, I, uh, I'm here tonight with, uh, the chair, chairman of our Mississippi Sound Coalition, Mr. Marlon Ladner, who's also your supervisor, as you well know, and I'm happy to say my wife, Dr. Patria Terrace, is here tonight with me, she's my chief research scientist, and my sister Tam has just become, she's here with us in the audience, she just became a, a resident of Long Beach, and so she's a voter and taxpayer.
Well, thank you.
And she's given me permission to come tonight, so.
Prochance.
So, um, thanks for supporting the mission of the Mississippi Sound Coalition, which you joined when we formed it in two thousand and nineteen. The Mississippi Sound itself is in danger of becoming a dead sea in a generation if we don't take some bold action soon. We recently had a victory in January in our first litigation piece, Judge DeRola gave a, an order against the Corps to consult National Marine Fisheries, um, about the impact of the Bonnet Carry opening, uh, on the Mississippi Sound, and that's, that's a nice big footstep in the door, uh, step in the door, a foot in the door, but what, it's just the beginning of, of what we are trying to do to call attention to this problem and look for solutions. Uh, Marlon and I, uh, went to, and by the way, that case was funded by the Board of Supervisors of Harrison County, Biloxi, Hancock County Board, and DeIrberville, uh, and that took us three and a half years to get that far since two thousand and nineteen, but, so Marlon and I went to DC in June to meet with our congressional delegation, and, uh, I'm happy to report that all, all, both senators and all four congressmen are very supportive of what we're trying to do, and they have ordered the Corps, they sent a letter at our request, ordered the Corps to consult with all twelve cities and the three boards of supervisors, the fishermen and the tourism community here in Harrison County, as they go forward with what Congress now has funded them and told them to do, which is called the Lower Mississippi River Comprehensive Management Study. It's just begun, it's a five-year study, and they're compelled, in that law, they, they took the, what, the words we wrote and, uh, and compel them to study the impact, not just of the Bonnet Carry, but of anything dealing with the Mississippi River on the Mississippi Sound estuary, as well as Lake Ponton Drain and Lake Born, and really Louisiana fisheries are in trouble just like us. So, uh, that was, that's been, uh, a, a, a lot of momentum going in our favor there, but we're preparing then to do hearings and, uh, presentations to the Corps in that study, and we hope when we start having those hearings that, uh, that you will, uh, participate and citizens from Long Beach and all of our communities will, will really fill those, uh, those hearing rooms to, to make the point that, that we need a solution, and this is really something the national, the federal government's got to solve this, it's, it's really in the hands of the Corps and in the hands of the Congress. Our legislature, also, we met with them this year, and, and they, uh, they appropriated some funds for our coalition to, to prepare the scientific studies and economic impact studies to present to the Corps when those hearings start happening, and also to use, uh, uh, from time to time in, in litigation as, as the science behind it. So, we appreciate that, and Richard Bennett, our own representative right here, and, and Senator Mike Thompson really led the way, as did our whole Harrison County delegation, and the whole coast delegation, really, and we're going back again in Jan-, in January to ask for appropriation for the next fiscal year to continue those studies. Those studies are being done by USM and Mississippi State, by the way, so far, although we do request for proposals. Meanwhile, there is a threat looming that is worse than the Bonnet Carry, if you can imagine. The, Louisiana has proposed a Mid-Bretton Sound diversion project, using BP money for their Coastal Protection Restoration Authority, called SEAPER, to below, uh, right, really, along the river where it faces into the Mid-Bretton Sound, they want to have a diversion there south of New Orleans to try to help take the sediment from the river and rebuild the marsh, which, you know, is, needs to be revived, and there's ways to do that, we think there are better ways, like dredging. The trouble is, Mississippi Southern and State in January came out with a study that we had requested that showed that if the Mid-Bretton is open into the mid, into the Mid-Bretton Sound, the way the water flows, eventually, very quickly, really, within a fairly short time, gets to the Mississippi Sound, the same water that destroyed us in two thousand and nineteen will kill the sound anyway, and that's permanent, it's open every day, it's not just open in flood times. So, uh, we're challenging that, and when it's there, haven't gotten their permit yet, but that's one of the big pieces of litigation, that if, uh, if we can't get them to see the error of their ways and find a better solution, then we want to be able to challenge that at the appropriate time when, when they do ask for their permit. So, uh, we also, Marlon is kind of calling this phrase, that we're sort of trying to be a hornet's nest, stinging the federal government every time we can in court and in hearings and with congressional action, to make them pay attention, uh, to this, this issue, it's, it's enormously, uh, complicated, and it's not an easy job to run that Mississippi River, but the problem is, we're kind of the dumping ground. See, the, the fertilizers and the animal manure are all over the Midwest, thirty-one states that empty down into the Mississippi River, when they opened that Bonnet Carry, one point three trillion, in two thousand and nineteen, one point three trillion cubic feet of water came into the Mississippi Sound, carrying all those nutrients, and that what it did, that they fed the algae, and the algae bloom occurred, and they closed our beaches and devastated tourism, and, and the water had no salt in it, so it, it, for thirty days, we had our arse to bed, getting no salt, and it killed them. So, y'all know all this, but apparently it's, it's taking time for it to, the real issue here to sink in on the federal level, so that's what we're all about, is to try to preserve and protect and restore the sound, and find some win-win solutions to these things, uh, to manage the river better and, and not destroy us in the process. So, in doing that, uh, the legislature did not fund money for litigation, uh, and we'd like the state to join in with us, and I think the AG is considering joining in with us on these cases as we go forward, but, so we've gone back to the cities and the counties to try to fund a war chest, and so far, uh, for this future litigation and for these hearings and for the presentations that we'll be making to the Corps in that, uh, study that Congress ordered, and Harrison County Board of Supervisors have, have committed two hundred and fifty thousand to that fund, Biloxi, two hundred and fifty thousand, DeIrberville, thirty-three thousand, uh, Pass Christian, thirty, so far, and we're trying to go to every community and, and appeal to them to consider what you feel would be fair and appropriate. I gave Steve a, a, a spreadsheet that showed by population, what a pro-rata share would be by population of cities and counties outside the city limits, if we had a million-dollar war chest, now that's, uh, for a longer term, but over a period of time, we're facing the Department of Justice, who in the first case we had, had four of their best lawyers in DC down here, fighting us, and, uh, because they have a, you know, a blank check to fund all that, and so what, what we have here is, is an opportunity to kind of band together and, and, and try to fund this thing, uh, so that, 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 so far, we've had great success, we think we'll continue to have success, we're planning to file a Marine Mammal Protection Act case here fairly soon, the Bonnet Carry in two thousand and nineteen killed ten percent of the dolphins in the, in, in the sound, they're kind of the canaries in the coal mine here, and so, uh, that's just one more way of making the Corps pay attention and do it during this study. So I also gave Steve a resolution for y'all to consider, uh, at an appropriate time, which would be the same thing that Biloxi and DeIrberville and the others have looked at, because I left them out blank, and what we're just saying, please, please think about what you think would an appropriate participation and join in a, as named plaintiffs in, in these cases, and, uh, be glad to answer any questions now or later at any time, or if you want me to come back at any time, but, uh, that, that's kind of very brief overview of, of what we've been doing and where we're headed, so.
Well, Mr. Blessie, I, first of all, or Gerald, excuse me, uh, and, and Dr. Ladner, thank y'all very much for ta-, you know, taking this and heading, heading this up, you know, this is something important, uh, uh, Mayor Bass and I happened to be in DC at one point in time when the coalition was meeting up there, uh, you know, and, and so this is important to not only Long Beach, but Pass Christian, the entire coast, so for that, we do say thank you, you know, and, and this is not a, not an easy hill to climb, so, um, but a, at the, at the pleasure of the board, you know, if you guys would like to consider this, uh, you know, table this to look at the resolution, I'm, I'm open to any thoughts, ideas?
I'd, I'd like for us to table it and get with counsel, and let's discuss everything, and, uh, you know, see if there, we can find some means to help finance this.
A second.
Okay, so I have a, a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion or questions for Mr. Blessie?
Not at this time, I don't, thank you, sir.
I'm gonna, uh, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you so much, I'm available anytime to help, uh, Steve.
Welcome to Long Beach.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and we're gonna, uh, moving on to, uh, item number two under new business, closeout package for Mount Bass drainage, uh, bottom-to-top construction.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special, uh, special event application, City of Long Beach, uh, Trix, Treats, and Trail.
A move.
Second.
A motion and a, a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Courtney, for bringing.
Yes, thank you, Courtney, sorry, uh, number four, I, is this the one we need to go?
Yeah.
Okay, number four, uh, just compensation offer, uh, right-away purchase, Klondike Commission Road R3 Services LLC, The Blue House Coffee LLC, and Dent Ice LLC.
A move.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion carries. Uh, moving on, number five, advertise for school board trustee FY twenty-twenty-four.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Question.
Up, up, sorry.
Who's, um, whose position's up?
I believe it's Mr. Carpenter's.
It is, yes.
Mr. Tom Carpenter.
Actually, Donald, need to.
Oh, before I call for the vote, uh, note that, uh, Patrick Bennett's, uh, recused himself. All right, now I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay. Okay, let the record show that Patrick's back. Thank you, sir. All right, uh, number six, uh, Ms. Sherri, uh, Methino, uh, neighborhood issue.
Hi.
Hi, Ms. Sherri.
Hi.
If you could introduce. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address for, just for the record, please.
My name is Sherry Messino. I live at 102 North Lane. I also own a house at 104 North Lane, next door. It is not a neighbor issue I'm here about, it's a neighborhood issue.
Got you.
Just to the north. I'm sorry.
Can you pull the mic down, just so that they can hear you, please?
Yeah, they can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to the north of my house at 104, Marcus Bullard is squatting on the property. I don't know if it's a name any of you are familiar with. I brought you photographs of the property that I get to look at every day and anybody else who happens down that block. He lives there illegally. I've seen him buy drugs on the property. This week, I had a dog removed from the property that was on a two-foot chain, not being fed or watered. He lives in a shed with no electric, water, or sewer. He's intimidated all the neighbors, and when we went and talked to the village, even the inspectors are intimidated to go onto the property to give, to try and make resolution here. He needs to be removed from this property. It is, it's a liability to the neighborhood, a large liability. Can I?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, bring it up. I apologize.
Thank you, ma'am.
While she's doing it, what's her status? Chief, can you help us out, or what's her status on?
The state, we've cleaned that property once. I went over, we, police department went over there with the building officials and the public works. The property was cleaned, and I believe at that point, you were letting him live in one of your houses, correct?
I did, I know. When I purchased the house, he was living in my house. I was told how to remove him. I did that, and he said, "That was fine, I'll just go live in the shed," which he did.
At the time, his brother owned the house, the shed, and was allowing him to stay on the property.
Didn't somebody come here that owned the property?
Lloyd, his brother. That was his brother.
Property, from what I understand, now the property is owned by the state of Mississippi.
Now, it is owned by the, at the time, it was, so I think they're taking the steps to notify the state.
You are?
The state, go to the tax rolls, the state owns all the plots that the city cleaned up a year and a half ago.
Right.
So after our study, the state has the properties, they can do what they want with them, the city will not ever get any of their money back. We got a check, I talked to Keny one day, we got a check for around $4,000 of a $20,000 debt. So the city's going to have to eat the rest of that money.
Hey, what's our...
The best of my knowledge, the state, we won't get any money out of that deal.
What's our, which way do we go to remove him?
Yeah.
That's attorney.
I don't know the legal way to remove him without the property owner going and filing eviction at justice court.
So that's the state?
I'm unsure how the state became the fee owner and title to the property.
You own the tax rolls, it says the state of Mississippi.
Nobody, from what I understand, the taxes weren't paid, and nobody bought it at a tax sale.
And it became a property owner.
I mean, I've had my, he's had, while I wasn't at my residence, he's had electric cords. I've had to call the police because he stole electric. Now I have another house that I've been working on. I'm just worried about the consequences when I'm not present here. I have dual residence in Indiana.
But since it's not his property and the state owns, isn't he technically trespassing? Can't we remove him?
But it has to have the property owner do that, being the state, a representative from the state.
Can we make a phone call versus sending a letter? Would that be, can we make a phone call versus sending a letter? I mean, wouldn't that...
No, exactly, it's a call.
You'd have to call the Secretary of State.
Who would he call, Steve?
Through the Secretary of State's office.
The Secretary of State's office is the one who is, manages property owned by the state of Mississippi. Now, my experience, it's a state, Secretary of State would typically refer to local law enforcement to enforce a trespassing, but we'd have to get something from the Secretary of State saying that they're requesting the city's help to remove a squatter or a trespasser. That could probably be achieved through a phone call, and I'll facilitate, ma'am, with the chief and the building inspector to get that relief from the Secretary of State's office and turn it over to our law enforcement.
I appreciate that. Can he be removed for living in unsafe conditions? I mean, he clearly has no electric, water, power. I mean, it's...
Could we condemn that building?
Phil, that's a process.
Well, it's not supposed to be occupied, so there's really no reason to condemn it at this point, following in or creating a health hazard.
Is there someone I can follow up with on this in the future to see where we're headed?
You can follow up with Chief Seal and myself, and we will tell you what action the state of Mississippi has, what authority they've given us to act on.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you bringing me out tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, he's trying to ask me something. I can't hear him from back there. Mr. Fraser, would you recognize the gentleman?
Sir, come on up, and you can ask your question.
I just, I couldn't hear you back there, sir, I'm sorry. I mean, it is a health hazard. He's over there with fecal matter, no sewers, he's stealing electric from people, he's illegally there. He cannot stay in a shed with no water or electricity, which the inspectors had already told us, we can't have him living in our house with no electric and water, but they allow him to live in a shed with no electric and water. That's on the village. If he gets injured on that property now, that the state owns it, the village will be liable for his injury.
I'm sorry, who will be?
The city. He has chainsaws over there, they're doing drugs over there. I've lived there, I see all this. And this is before your board now, so you guys will all be liable if something happens to him or to somebody else there. And this has been ongoing. They said they removed him once and cleaned it up. Well, remove him, clean it up, and knock the little shed down, remove the whole thing. The state ain't going to care. They're still going to sell it for bad taxes. Next year, somebody will buy it for bad taxes. Get rid of it and clean it up, somebody will buy it. It's very simple. He should not be there, and the village shouldn't allow him to stay there. Condemn the little building, get a little judge to sign off, and he can't stay there. It's unhealthy for him and everybody else.
So would you, you and the chief get together tomorrow and let's move forward?
As soon as the Secretary of State, which is the lawful owner of the property, authorizes local law enforcement to remove him from their property, we'll direct the city law enforcement to do so.
The city can actually remove him for unsafe living conditions. He should not be there in those conditions at all. The city can remove him for that. Right?
That I don't know, sir.
I think we just ran into that on East Old Path.
The city can remove him for unsafe living conditions.
Okay, hang on, sir.
Thank you.
Is what was done, was the city condemned that residence, it was a residence, and now they're just living in the yard and a tent, and there's nothing we can do about that. Nothing different than the homeless living in the woods or here and there. We can't go make them leave the woods without the property owner.
There is no property owner. The state owns this.
There is a property owner.
Every, every piece of property, somebody owns. There's no property that's just free. Every piece of property, somebody owns.
The village can still remove him for unsafe living conditions.
Okay, sir.
If he cannot stay in the shed, it's unsafe, and you have to leave.
Okay. We've heard you, we appreciate your time, sir.
I appreciate your time, all you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. So we have that. We don't need, do we need a vote on that? No, okay. Number seven, Harvard Discussion, Alderman Brown.
I think some of this, as we go discuss on the engineering, but I have a couple questions, David. Where do we stand on a timeline? And I know we ran into some issues with the panels, but we are having no work down there, that they could be working, and they're not, for the last two months. I mean, there's still work to be done, and I just want to know where we stand there, or if we can get a timeline from the contractor.
So...
My first question.
I'll let David answer, but then I have an update from this afternoon as well.
Yeah. Absolutely, you know, we did run into the issues with the piling and whether it was, whether what they were proposing was going to meet the contract requirements, and we've worked through all that. And at the moment that we worked through it, I said, "All right, now that all that's behind us, can you give us a schedule?" I didn't hear from him for about a week. I asked him yesterday, "Can you give us a schedule?" And he did not at that time give me a schedule. He's still working on his process that it's going to take to get, to produce the contract conforming products. Although, I will say that two weeks ago or so when we talked, or a week ago when we talked, he said, "Hey, I'll, we should have piles on site in eight weeks," which would be beginning of December. But if things continue to drag like this, I can't order them for him, and I'm, we've satisfied everything he needs to know to be able to do it. I really don't know what he's working on to get those products on site. I think why he's not there working is because he's just trying to be able to chain his process so that, once the piles come, he can start working and keep working, as opposed to coming this month, working, and then having to leave while he waits for the piles to be delivered.
But we've been told that these piles have been, I mean, you know, two, three weeks ago, they're supposed to be ready?
Right.
And now we're saying two or three months now.
Well, there's, there's two different kinds of piles on this project. There's one set of piles that are ready, and there's one set of piles that did not meet the contract requirements, and we've worked through those. He wants to do the ones that aren't ready, his plan, his process, his means and methods, which is up to him, is to do those first.
Who is him?
He would be J.E. Borees is the prime contractor on this job.
Can I, can I ask this question?
Borees.
Mikey, what would prevent, would it be against protocol for have, to have him noticed to be at the next meeting and have some answers for the board?
Well, I think we've got, what we've done is, we've hired the, you know, we've got a project manager now, and I think we have a, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a committee now, am I correct?
Right.
So can we not, Mayor Pro Temp, organize a meeting with the committee and David, and maybe even a representative from Prestress, well, and Ander Corp, yes?
Well, and I think you'd certainly want the prime contractor there. If Prestress comes, that's fine, but, but we don't have any contract with Prestress.
No, I understand that, but they can give us a timeline, because I'm hearing different things than what he's telling.
Sure, I understand.
And, you know, this is, this is, I see this same company doing other jobs along the Gulf Coast, and I'm just wondering if he's putting us off to finish his other jobs, because we're sitting out there with a track co and a drag line for the last two months that's been idle. We could put a flag on the top of it and maybe use it for that or something, I don't know, but enough's enough of this, so can you set up a...
I can set up a, we have a tentative meeting for next Thursday, we'll just, from our meeting today, and we had a kickoff meeting with Overstreet and Ander Corp today, talking about steps of moving forward with this, so...
Would that have been the Harbor Committee?
Yeah, I was going to ask, is...
Because I'm on the Harbor Committee.
Yeah, I am too. I hadn't heard nothing.
Were we invited?
No.
Why not?
I went to this meeting to set up, so that we can set up a meeting.
Okay.
So, okay, that's my first one.
So here's the thing, is, having four different meetings today that we were at, I went into this one to set up, because, Mikey, have you not called me 18 times, 19 times, trying to get updates?
Every time I walk, I call you.
Exactly. So I'm answering this question. I'm not going to bring, and whether the board agrees or not, for me to go get answers, I'm not going to bring four people into each and every meeting so I can get answers. Now, when we have all parties set and we want updates, then, yes, I will schedule a meeting and invite everybody.
And we're going to have to wait until next week? We can't do it sooner?
I, we have one tentatively scheduled for next Thursday.
And I was also under the impression that Ander Corp was going to give us a timeline, and we haven't heard anything from them.
They are, they are still reviewing the plans.
Okay. My next question, is the timeline on our rest of our east wall bid process? Did I miss something? I know I wasn't at the last board meeting, but I...
Yes, that's, that's what I had called you about.
Okay. Is that ready to bid out?
Not until the next engineering report comes back.
When is that going to be?
Well, remember, the name of, remember how I was explaining to you, the company's name is Prestressed. They are not Prestressing this contract, the concrete, and that's what the contract called for. So they had to go back and get all the documentation showing that this concrete sheet would stand up to the salt air, salt water. So that's what the holdup on the two different pilings is. Then we're waiting to get feedback. Go ahead.
Okay. On the eastern wall, we had some, some concerns raised by another engineer that's not even party to the design, and to address those, it would be, it would be dangerous to, based on his, his concerns, it would be dangerous to bid this job in the condition, not the condition that it's in, but without having an opportunity to have a third-party review. So Overstreet has decided to hire a third-party engineer to review the plans, which we're working on, and the, to, to address that or to allow that time to proceed, we delayed that bid date to October 31, which, by the way, at this point, is actually no, no time cost to you guys, because even if we had received bids on October 17, which is today, even if we had received bids then, we wouldn't have been able to review that and recommend that for award until the first meeting in November. And I think if we can receive bids on October 31, that should, that timeline still happens.
Okay.
So we're, we're working hard to get that third-party review done that will put this issue behind us. We don't think it's a reason to be concerned, but when you got another engineer making those kind, the kinds of, of comments that were made, we elected to move that way.
Okay. And the last thing, I think, is the, and you've got it under engineering, we can discuss that then, is the two contracts coming up, the inner wall and the southern quake.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you, David.
Thank you, Donald.
All right. Moving on. Counteroffer, right-of-way purchase for Klondike and Commission. I'm not sure if this one needs to go into executive session because of it being a purchase Mr. Attorney?
I think it probably does.
Okay.
Making motion to go to executive session.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Executive session?
Second.
Have a motion and a second come out of, uh, executive, uh, session, excuse me. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right.
I'd like to make a motion. We advise council to respond back to the offer that we've had on the Klondike Commission.
Second that.
Have a motion and a ca, a second, uh, any discussion?
You need specificity, Steve?
I'm sorry, Mr. I was, wasn't.
Do you need specificity on how to respond?
No, I'm, I'm pretty sure I got it. Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
Hearing any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Short and succinct.
Motion carries. All right. Uh, departmental business.
Nope.
Where are we at? Right-of-way?
We have additions.
Oh, sorry. All right. Uh, Angie, uh, planning, uh, strategic planning.
Yes. Um, at the mayor's breakfast, he had brought up that, um, the last term, he had spent three days with the alderman doing strategic planning and getting a plan going forward. Um, I would like to, um, suggest that we, um, go from there and start forward. Um, I think we, with the Economic Development Committee, we have a potential person that might be leading, um, that group. And I think it is a good time for that group and, and us to get together. I'd like to, um, put it out there to schedule some dates, or maybe if we just discuss it right now and look at it. But I think that we need to sit down and spend quality time looking at our strategic plan, where we are, where we're going, and where we need to be.
Second.
Is that, is that in form of a work session?
Yes.
That's what I wanted to make sure.
I don't think it's gonna be one. It'll be more.
Yeah, but I mean, we're coming into the holidays is our only problem here, so.
Okay.
Any?
Pleasure of the board. Do y'all still like to do it on the off Tuesday or?
Yeah.
Off Tuesday. So the next off Tuesday would be Halloween, or?
I would not make that.
Twenty-fourth.
Well, you've already got a work session scheduled for that day, so that's why I skipped that one. So the thirty-first, and then November fourteenth and twenty-eighth would be your next two off Tuesdays.
Good to fourteenth.
Um, as much as I hate to say it, I know. I know. Fourteenth and the twenty-first. I'll, I'll be out of state.
Twenty-eighth?
Yes. I'll be here. Twenty-eighth.
Gonna do it on November twenty-eighth at five P.M.?
Yep.
Okay.
That'll wouldn't give us enough time to, um, get some things together.
We can start working on it.
Yeah, just getting things to prepare, and I'll get with Keny and stuff.
All right. So, uh.
The motion is to set a work session for Tuesday, November twenty-eighth at five P.M. for strategic planning.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number ten, I need a, uh, so due to conflict of scheduling, I need to, uh, uh, appoint a prosecutor pro temp. Uh, Mr. Chris Fisher has offered to do it this week.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, all righty. Uh, mayor's office, I don't have anything. Uh.
You have something with number eleven tidlins?
We added that as engineering.
That's under engi, engineering, uh, section B. Uh, personnel, fire, uh, police department, uh, we have a termination and a rehire.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, city clerk revenue expense report, September twenty-twenty-three?
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, under city clerk, uh, item B, vehicle, uh, financing recommendation, there's, uh, three in front of you there. Uh, we reached out to three local banks, kind of looking at the, uh, uh, different possibilities there. Um, I, I, I don't know if you guys want to make a decision tonight on it, or if you want to review it and come back. What, are we under a time crunch on this?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, because we've got vehicles.
In route. Okay.
Make a motion. We, we go with, uh, the bank that the city or comptroller has.
Deemed the lowest?
Deemed the lowest.
Second.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. I believe it's cadence.
It would be cadence, Mike, they have the lowest interest rate.
Okay. All right.
Cadence, yeah.
Yep. All righty. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Uh, fire department?
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Uh, police department, uh, contract for Humane Society of South Mississippi. That's basic standard each year that we.
It went down thou, close to a thousand dollars, I believe.
So moved.
Daniel, yeah.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill, you got anything else?
Nothing.
All right. Thank you. Uh, engineering, uh, under item A, inner bulkhead and southern quay.
This is our harbor. The, the, the last meeting, and I know I, I've read your letter, uh, to the board. The last meeting we had with Andercorp, they would suggested that we put this together and bid as one packet.
Okay.
Patrick, am I correct?
Yeah. Uh, basically, I think to try to save on mobilization fees and.
Is that feasible to do without much?
I mean, it, it will certainly take some effort. Overstreet can do that. For what it's worth, the, the, one of the main reasons that I have continued going this way is I'm, I'm just afraid that we don't have enough money in our, in our kit to do both projects.
Right.
Okay.
Um, and so I thought that bidding them separately would allow us that flexibility to, to, to make this, the intelligent decision on which one we want to do.
I, I think that they will probably still do them as separate bids. I think they just wanted to, you know, add it, i- if you look at the whole project, you might have one company come in and, and a bid. Instead of making that two small projects, one proj, I, I think they're looking at taking the entire scope of work at the harbor and doing bids. That way, one company might put in for four different phases or four different bids of it, to try to save on mobilization. But that was early, I mean, that was talks from the beginning.
Is this, you, you, there is a meeting Thursday, right?
Yes.
With Andercorp. Is this something we have tabled till we meet with Andercorp, and maybe David, you can be in, in, on this meeting Thursday? And we can get on the same page and bring it back at the next board meeting and dec, and decide which way we need to go?
I, I can do that.
I understand what you're saying now, and that does make sense. I mean, if they, I, Patrick, I think he's talking about putting it and making it all one packet, the way he was talking, uh.
Gotcha. And look, when we talked to them, that was like an initial conversation.
I know that. That's what I'm saying. Let's get on the same page.
I think we all need to get at, sit down at the table before we do anything.
Correct.
So you have anything else on this, or is that what you was wait, the only thing you have?
No, I mean, I think that's, that's part of it. I think having a conversation with Andercorp, I mean, even right now, I have concerns. I think we have concerns that whether there's even enough space in the harbor to, to build more walls while, while two walls are being built.
Right.
They gotta get on barges.
Yeah, and, and, and you can do that and just recognize, you know, get ready to pay for that.
Right.
And that's fine.
Okay. You know, so I'm gonna make a motion. We table this to the next board meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Uh, item B, that was added, tidlins lease application.
Yeah, we had applied, y'all had authorized us to apply for a tidlins lease application some time ago for the, for the Gateway Project. We did that application, but it just got lost in the Secretary of State. We followed up with him. We even sent him a check, and he said, we, we don't have any record that that application, so, um, I'm, really, this is just a request to, that, that we update that application and resend it. Um, it's, because it's been years, two or three years since we made this application, and, and the tidlins lease application just sort of dropped off the radar because the, the signage and monumentation project that Christian Preas is doing right now didn't need a lease applic, a tidlins lease application for that. And so this is really just requesting authorization to submit that tidlins lease application to the Secretary of State on y'all's behalf.
So on their end?
I'm sorry?
On their end, they lost the application?
I don't know if they lost it, but I, I said, what about these two applications, and they, that, that I had emails that I sent to them, and they said, we don't have any record of those.
Okay, I make a motion. We send, advise David to move forward with this.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, public works contract amendment, H-two-O innovation.
Yes.
Yep. Go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm, I'm waiting on you.
Uh, what you have before you is, uh, what we've done the last couple of years. Um, we've done a fuel increase because the fuel prices have gone up. Um, you know, all the prices have gone up across everything else. H-two-O's contract has stayed the same. Uh, one point eight-five percent is what we normally get, um, every year for our normal contract, but this fuel prices are about forty thousand dollars. We, H-two-O elected to take half of that and was hoping that the city would, uh, take half of that. I did go ahead and budget for this, um, during budgeting time for the city. So this is all included in y'all's budget, and it does go under, in, uh, water. So it will be no increase to what y'all have now in front of y'all that y'all approved back in October.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Uh, any discussion? Any further discussion? Excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Uh, recreation, uh, Mr. Paul's not here, but contract with MDOT for senior citizen bus program.
Second. First.
Second.
I have a second and then a first in that order.
And then a second.
And then another second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Uh, building office.
Yeah, I placed a map up in front of everybody for the vacation rentals that Ryan and Court, with Courtney's help, uh, assembled this map. The first page is all of them that we can, that we have on record, and the other three are just divided in the city where they are. And some you might see a single dot in its, so, in a condo, so there might be five or six in that condo development. So y'all can look at that. That just gives you a general idea where they are in the city. And as you can see, most of them are south of the tracks.
But we still don't know where the illegal ones are yet.
Ryan's working on that now, though, correct?
Yeah, Ryan's working on it every day, but.
Hard to find them. Hard to find them all.
Okay.
Yeah, and the lady at the meeting we had said there's probably twice as many that are illegal that are legal.
That's right.
All right. Thank you. Mike, uh, you have anything else to add?
No, sir.
All right. Uh.
I was saying, could we publish a list of the ones that are registered?
Uh, I don't see why not.
That way, at least people will have an idea of if it's, their neighbor's running a, they know they're doing it, and we have a list, they know. Because I don't know that, you know, it would be possible to identify unless you did a public records request or something.
Okay. All right.
And if, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if he's talking about like on our website or, and at that, at that same time as one of the members of the audience suggested, we could, um, solicit the public's or the citizens' help in identifying vacation rentals that are not identified on the list, which would maybe help our city identify those, reach out to them and make them get legal. If we could, if we could give the city notice to help us identify those, it would probably help Mike's office let us know so.
All right. I have a, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Address.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Uh, uh, let's see. Municipal court, Ms. Alma, you good?
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Uh, Harry?
We're good.
The harbor, good? All right. Uh, Courtney, you got anything?
I'm good.
All right, awesome. Nothing under derelict properties. Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing further, sir.
All righty. Thank you, sir. I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Adjourn. All right.